Welcome. We're really glad that you all have come out this afternoon on behalf of the Southern Resident Killer Whale population. I am Ruth Howell. I am the Branch Chief for Communications and External Affairs at the NOAA Fisheries West Coast Region, and I'm going to be facilitating this evening. We've all been through a pretty tough couple of weeks with J-35, with J-50, and we're glad to have this opportunity. We were up in Friday Harbor last night and here today to come together in community for us to share what's been happening for us and to share our information and for us to hear from you and hear your thoughts. And so, we can talk about and share where we go from here on behalf of this population. So, I want to pause before we get started too much further to recognize that we are on ancestral tribal lands. These are the lands of the Duamish people, and we have been working very closely with many of the tribes on behalf of these whales. They're important partners, and we want to recognize and appreciate their support. So, I'm going to share our objectives and then talk a little bit about how the rest of the day, the afternoon, will go, and then I'll introduce our speakers. So, our objectives in being here are threefold. We want to share our emergency response approach. That was originally why we put these public meetings together. We wanted to get your feedback on that. Obviously, things shifted over time, and J-50 is now missing, and we are unlikely to put into effect our response approach this time. But, we recognize that with this population, we may be in a similar situation in the future. So, we want to take this opportunity to hear what you think about that approach. Second, we want to share our efforts on our broader recovery for this population. We've been doing a lot over the decades, particularly since they were declared endangered in 2005, for salmon recovery, for contaminant, reducing contaminants, and for reducing impacts from noise. And so, we want to share where we are on that. And third, we want to hear from you. That's the main and most important reason that we're here. We want to hear things like what these whales mean to you, how the experience of J-50 and J-35 have changed what you do, your experience or what you've been doing on behalf of these whales, thoughts about how people and whales can co-aside and live together, and then overall thoughts on direction, where we go from here. So, to do that, we've got sort of a two-part agenda. First, we've prepared some remarks to go over some of those big things that we wanted to share with you, our overall broader recovery and our response effort for J-50 and our emergency response plan. We'll first hear from our Deputy Regional Administrator, Scott Rumsey, and he'll talk about the overall approach and how J-50 fits into our overall approach in recovering this population, and also how you all can be a part of that. And Kristin Wilkinson in the middle here, she's our Washington, Oregon Stranding Coordinator, and she will speak on behalf of the J-50 emergency response for the last seven weeks. And lastly, Lynn Berry, she is our Recovery Coordinator for Southern Resident Killer Whales, and she'll go through the response approach that we developed should we have the opportunity to intervene and rescue J-50 and bring her back to health.
Well, thank you all for being here. I really do want to recognize that you all took time out of your personal lives and your busy weekends and even your families to be here. I'm glad to see that some people brought their families with them. You know, we're all here because we care deeply about J-50. We care deeply about Southern Resident Killer Whales. And it fills me with a lot of optimism to see so many people in this room that care so deeply about the same subject. You know, if we are going to recover Southern Resident Killer Whales, it's going to take the entire community of the Sailor Sea, and we're going to need to work together, you know, have civil discourse and work together in partnership to recover Killer Whales. You know, there's no single silver bullet. It's a really complex issue, and it's going to take all of us working together. So, as Ruth indicated, we wished we were here under brighter circumstances. We had hoped that we would come here and share with you our proposed response plan for J-50 and solicit your input. And as I think you're all aware, J-50 has not been seen since last Saturday off of the Fraser River, and since then, her family has been seen on a couple of instances without her. So, you know, I think we're all pretty sad about that and fearing the worst. You know, I do want to acknowledge that we have been really lucky in all the resources and assets since then that have been thrown at searching via air and water for J-50. So, you know, I still hold out hope, but I know it doesn't look so good. So, you know, why are we here? Ruth touched on it. You know, we still want to hear your thoughts on the appropriate considerations in intervening with a sick killer whale in the wild. You know, this is an unprecedented challenge of having to deal with and possibly administer medical care to a killer whale in the wild. And, you know, really along the way, we had to make up our plan on the fly. We brought in the world's experts with one goal in mind, which was the well-being of J-50 and the Southern Resident Killer Whales at large. You know, I do want to make clear that our overarching philosophy in considering whether to intervene was, one, the goal of having J-50 be a contributing and reproductive member of her population in the wild, and also a do-no-harm philosophy. You know, we recognize that any level of intervention can disturb her pod and her population, and we did not want to intervene in such a way that it would disturb the behavior or disrupt the really important family bonds of her pod or the Southern Resident Killer Whales at large. So, you know, we may find ourselves in this situation again, and so, it is really important to us to hear your input as we develop a plan and hopefully proactively can develop a plan and consider your input if this happens again. And of course, I'm really interested in hearing your input on Southern Resident Killer Whale recovery in general. You know, as I mentioned, it's a really complex problem, but clearly, we're not doing enough. The whales are not doing well. They're continuing to decline. You know, I view the plight of the Southern Resident Killer Whales really as a canary in the coal mine. I mean, the Puget Sound ecosystem is really sick, and the whales are suffering from that. And collectively, we all need to do more to recover the ecosystem and support Killer Whales. You know, I do want to acknowledge that, you know, over the past decade and more, you know, we have done a lot to help recover Killer Whales. I mean, I acknowledge it hasn't been enough, but I want to note some of those things. We've made critical investments in research so that our recovery approach is informed by science. I mean, that is, you know, as a scientific agency, that's absolutely critical. Through the Pacific Coastal Salmon Recovery Fund, over the past almost two decades now, we've invested over a billion dollars into salmon habitat restoration, and our partners have nearly matched that billion dollars. We've reduced harvest domestically and in international negotiations with Canada. You know, at the same time, we've tried to maintain the hatchery production of salmon to be available for Killer Whales and our tribal trust and treaty obligations and fisheries, but consistent with salmon recovery. We feel that the most sustainable future for salmon and Killer Whales are naturally viable wild salmon populations. We, you know, I've mentioned partnerships. It really is all about partnerships. We've partnered with the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife on enforcement. We have an important enforcement presence on the water. We have partners that are involved in on-the-water and off-the-water education of boaters and anglers. We have instituted vessel approach regulations to minimize the disturbance of whales as they forage and go about their behavior. The Environmental Protection Agency and Washington Ecology are struggling with that really huge problem, which is how do we deal with contamination in the Puget Sound ecosystem? And this year, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Whale Watchers, San Juan County instituted a voluntary vessel closure area, really trying to get at making sure that where the whales are, they have, they're undisturbed in trying to forage and go about their normal behavior. Governor Inslee established the Killer Whale Task Force. I know there's some strong views about this task force, but it is providing a venue for some really important discussions to be had, and it's also providing some important technical products that I think will be helpful in allowing us to focus our resources on those salmon populations and those elements that will have the best bang for the buck for the Killer Whales. There's a lot of discussion about breaching the Snake River dams, and I know there's a lot of interest there. You know, frankly, NOAA does not have the regulatory authority to breach those dams, but there is a rigorous analysis being done right now through the Bonneville Power Administration and the Army Corps of Engineers to evaluate scenarios of removing one or more dams. So, I think those who are really interested in that factor, I encourage you to engage in that process for sure. So, there's a lot going on, but again, I acknowledge that it isn't enough, and it has not been enough, and we need to do more. And, you know, I think we all need to reflect, not only in our jobs, but personally, what can we do to contribute to recovering the Puget Sound ecosystem and helping the Killer Whales? You know, as we move into Kristin and Lynn doing their talks and hearing public comment, you know, again, I want us all to remember that we're all here for at least one reason, and that is how much we care about the Killer Whales and recovering the Killer Whales. I think it's really important that, you know, we recognize that noble intent. Everyone is here for that same purpose, and let's respect people and their views and make sure everyone can be heard. That is why I'm here today. I really want to be, I want to understand everyone's perspectives, and I hope we can all share that respect with everyone else in the room. And then, in closing, I'll recognize that the public comment component is a little awkward. You know, we want to make sure everyone has a chance to be heard. You know, it's hard for us to not engage in the dialogue, but we simply don't have the time to do that today. I want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to speak. You know, afterwards, I hope to be able to talk to some of you individually. But again, let's recognize and respect letting everyone have a chance to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you all very much for being here today. I know I'm sitting at this table because I have been a lifelong lover of marine mammals, and I've dedicated my entire career to their conservation. So, while this is not the outcome that we had hoped or that we had planned for, I believe that we can learn from this experience and really make a difference in the future. So, today, I'll provide a short summary of how this all unfolded and let you know what information guided NOAA's decisions along the way. So, we all knew J-50 as a three-and-a-half-year-old female that was a very valuable member of J-Pod that had the potential to help recover this critically endangered population. In late July, aerial photogrammetry images were shared with us that showed that J-50's body condition was declining. And in August, our research partners and others in the water let us know that her behavior was changing, that she was lethargic and lagging behind her pod. And when this type of behavior and information is brought to our attention, we convene a consultation team led by NOAA to bring technical expertise in a variety of arenas to the discussion. This team is comprised of biologists, marine mammal researchers, veterinarians, pathologists, all getting together to discuss what information we have and what do we need to learn to make an informed decision. So, our team includes nonprofits, state and government agencies, and our West Coast Marine Mammal Stranding Network partners. It also included counterparts in Canada, because we know the whales cross over into Canadian waters very regularly. So, we engaged with our counterparts in Canada and began to develop a transboundary plan so that border wouldn't limit our ability to respond to her in need. I would recommend all of you go to our website and look at a comprehensive list of all of the partners that were engaged in this incredible effort. So, we know many of you have concerns about SeaWorld being involved in this response. We know they have been longstanding marine mammal stranding network partners because of the significant expertise they have in stranding, rehabilitation, and entanglement response. All of our partners are selected by their expertise and their expertise only, and they are working directly with us so NOAA can make the best decision in the interest of the whales. So, this consultation team suggested to NOAA that we prioritize collecting fecal and breath samples to help inform a diagnosis of J-50's condition. The veterinarians recommended providing medical treatment in the form of an antibiotic and dewarmer. On August 9th and September 4th, veterinarians administered medical treatment to J-50. And on August 12th, with the support of the Lemmy Tribe, we conducted an experimental tool trial to see if we could deliver oral medication to J-50. She did not show interest in the fish released into her path. This effort was never intended to feed J-50 or any member of her pod. We know and recognize that this is not a sustainable approach or a feasible way to recover this population. Despite taking all of these steps, J-50 continued to decline in condition, and as we all now know, she is missing from the population. We've spent two days with a dedicated aerial and on-water search, and the response team has now left San Juan Island. This has been a very challenging and complex case, but it has brought an incredible group of researchers and partners and this community together to have a very important conversation. This would not have been possible without the support and the collaboration of our partners. We sincerely thank you for your partnership and the expertise you've brought. Our next steps are to debrief with our team and also internally. And I'll finally get to write that final plan, that final logistics plan, so we can be better prepared for a case like this in the future. Thank you, and I'll now turn it over to Lynn Berry, my colleague, to speak about our response approach.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, for coming. So, I serve as NOAA's Recovery Coordinator for endangered Southern Resident Killer Whales. I've been working on this for 15 years, and during that time, we've learned so much about these whales through our long-term studies that have been going on, understanding the whales, through new, like, really innovative research techniques and developments in things like conservation medicine. And we've made progress. Scott mentioned some of the actions we've implemented, some of the things we've done, but we know we haven't done enough and we need to do more. And we've also witnessed some really tragic experiences during this time, loss of individuals, what we've gone through this summer with J-35, who is the female carrying her dead calf, and now with J-50 and just her declining condition. It's really touched all of us and brought to light that this is an opportunity where we have so much interest, so much compassion for these whales, and I'm hopeful that that will help support the really difficult and bold actions that need to be taken to help these whales. So, again, I want to stress that we very much to helped J-50. Our goal was to try to provide her with some medical treatment to improve her condition and for to reach our overall goal, which was to have her be just a functioning, productive member of this amazing population of really social animals. And despite her loss, we're conscious of the fact that this type of situation could come up again, and so, we really do want to hear from you. Your feedback's important to us to help understand kind of what our approach has been, how we're making decisions, and how we move forward from here. First and foremost, our objective was for J-50 to survive in the wild, ultimately contribute to recovery of this population, and we really appreciate all the input we've received from our expert consultation team, these international colleagues of ours with so much wealth of experience, what we've heard from all of our partners through this process, and also from the public. And so, in any rescue, again, our kind of most important priority is for an animal to remain in the wild with their population, with their family group. Captivity was never an intention as part of this rescue operation in our planning. In fact, you know, permanent captivity is something we very much want to avoid as it's not consistent with our overall goal to have these animals wild in their population and doing what they do that we care so much about. And so, any kind of rescue situation or compromised animals is going to have a lot of variability and things we need to consider. So, I just want to walk through some of the options that we are considering and preparing for as part of this response for J-50 and to inform, you know, what we might do in the future, some of the considerations and some of our decision points for NOAA. So, the first stage of any rescue operation would be assessing that situation in real time. What was a separation between J-50 and her family group? Was it safe for us to attempt a rescue? Safe for an individual like J-50? Safe for her family? Making sure we aren't causing more harm than the good we're trying to do? And also, making sure it's safe for our team that's conducting the rescue? And unfortunately, in this case, J-50's condition was really this trigger, letting us know that her body condition had declined severely. It was a life-threatening situation, and we wanted to see what we could do. We were monitoring her presence, her movements, and her connectivity with her mother, J-16, and her whole family group. And as mentioned, those last sightings of her, she was still with her mother, J-16. They were still in a close family group, and so, we did not intervene. If the situation had been different and she was stranded on a beach or alone and really struggling in that life-threatening situation, the next steps for a rescue would have been to capture her, to catch her and see if we could bring her into our care, and the first step would be to do a physical health assessment. It would be rapid but really thorough to learn as much as we can about her condition. We can collect samples and do amazing tests in real time, understanding blood parameters, doing ultrasounds, taking feces, just understanding her condition, and that could help us understand what might be underlying this really poor body condition we're seeing and that emaciated condition. And all the information from that physical health assessment would allow NOAA to make a decision about how to move forward. And it would be, you know, of course, a really difficult decision. If we thought that she had a condition that we couldn't treat, that medical care wouldn't be able to help her improve her chances of survival in the wild, we have an option in front of us to return her to her family immediately. You know, so we'd want to be knowing what the situation is, where, how, what is that separation on that transport boat where we're doing a physical health assessment? Could we be, you know, moving toward if her family was in a distant location and, as Kristin mentioned, like, across the border? So, we have a fluid way to return her to her family to perhaps live out the rest of her days. But if we did find a condition we could treat, and there's been so many great advancements in medical care of these animals, and we have so many helpful veterinarians and experts helping us, we looked for an opportunity, could we do short-term rehabilitation and care? So, NOAA has a lab facility at Manchester near Port Orchard, Washington, and to provide for that opportunity, to provide medical treatment and rehabilitation and care, we identified a net pen there. We also had a kind of temporary above-ground pool where we could stabilize her condition, then move her into this net pen and care for her to improve her chances of survival in the wild so we could return her to her family, and she could be that productive member of the population that we all want to see. That care and rehabilitation would be done very carefully and in a way that would not detract from her ability to survive in the wild, keeping that distance so she doesn't become habituated to people or dependent on people for food and for care. So, just maintaining her, keeping her wild, and having that opportunity to put her back with her family. So, that would also be that decision point based on how her condition improved, what we were able to provide for her as medical treatment, what we found about her underlying condition, and then all of that information and experts from our consultation team could provide that information to us. And NOAA and DFO, our colleagues, Department of Fisheries and Oceans, Canada, would find the way to return her to her family in the best way for her as well as for the, you know, having the least amount of disturbance on her family group. So, those are our overarching philosophies and goals with the response. Now, I know, you know, we've heard from many people who think we didn't do enough and we didn't act quickly enough, but we've also heard from others who feel like, you know, we did too much, and that what I've just laid out as some of our options for a response would be, you know, going too far for some people. And so, you know, the approach we've taken based on the science, based on our past experience and all of the expert information, and what we would learn each step of the way to make those decisions, you know, your feedback is a part of that as well. So, we really do want to hear from you about this situation, about our approach, and also, we want to hear your input on moving forward with protecting and conserving our ecosystem and those salmon that are so vital to our region, and really, all of that for the ultimate goal we're here to support, which is recovery of those Southern Resident Killer Whales that are just such amazing animals and that we all really care so much about. So, thank you very much for coming today and for giving us your thoughts.
All right. Thanks, Ruth. Great. Thank you all. So, now, you've heard from us at NOAA Fisheries, and we want to turn and hear from those of you who'd like to speak publicly, and a reminder that you can provide us written comments and also email comments into the email address up on the screen there. To, just to give an overview of how this is going to run, we want, as I mentioned before, we want to make sure that everybody who wants to speak has an opportunity to speak. So, everybody will have two minutes, and Forbes Darby here is our timekeeper. And actually, Forbes, do you mind sitting in the chair? Is there a chair over there? I think that'll be closer. Let's do that. So, Forbes has a timer. I'm making him do two things at once, both show you the timer and move, but there'll be a timer that will count down from two minutes, and we'll give you, go yellow when you're about done, and then we'll start counting up when the time is, time is up. So, we appreciate you sticking to that time. I will call up two individuals to speak at a time so that the next individual can stand behind the first person to speak. And just a couple of requests, when you do come up to speak, if you could begin by stating your name, limit, you know, your remarks to two minutes. I think I mentioned that already. And as Scott mentioned, remain respectful of the diverse viewpoints. This is a really challenging issue, and there's a lot of different points of view, and if you would, you know, respect, respect others' points of view. We will be documenting this in a number of ways. So, we have a note taker here, Hannah Melman, who will be taking notes and capturing what you have to say. Obviously, we have a number of cameras here. I mentioned our live Facebook streaming. Seattle Channel is recording as well, and will be broadcasting this at a later date. And we have, I think we have an audio recording. Last night, we had an audio recording. So, we will make sure to compile and share all of your comments. So, let's see. Oh, I did want to point out that as- Oh, I did want to point out that, as Scott mentioned, unfortunately, we won't be able to answer questions directly. If you do have very specific questions, put those on the written comment cards, and we will get back to you. Add your email address there. But because of time limitations, we won't be able to directly address questions. So with that, I'm going to call out the first two speakers, if you would come on up. The first speaker is Pepe Batun, or Bethune. And the second speaker is Sherry, or Shari Tarantino. Right? And Pepe, if you would, start with, start with your name.
My name is Captain Pepe Batun, and I work on marine conservation in different parts of the world, and have a television show, The Operatives, that covers marine conservation issues. It's quite sad that I'm here in the States, the most powerful country on earth, one of the wealthiest countries on earth, and we have an orca population that is in steep decline. And really, it goes back to the point made earlier about an ecosystem that is out of balance. Now, I'm going to take you very briefly back through history. What happened here a century ago was the pinnipeds were largely wiped out of Puget Sound. This is the seals and the sea lions. And it's something I want to nip in the bud. On Friday, there were some posts from fishermen saying that the problem here is the pinnipeds eating too many of the chinook salmon. Now, it does happen, that chinook salmon, the sea lion especially, will eat a lot of them. But here's what's happened. By wiping out the pinnipeds, for a period, you've probably got a huge salmon population here. America's wiped out the great white sharks. They've taken away the predators for the, for the pinnipeds. Then you've gone and taken orcas out of here, many of them that ended up in SeaWorld and places like this. I find it ironic now that SeaWorld is back here assisting on this, and yet, they were part of the original problem in reducing J-Pod in the first place. So you've gone and wiped out the predators for the seals. Now the seals are bouncing back. It's a success story. It should be celebrated. This notion of going and moving pinnipeds, which the fishermen are starting to talk about, is a nonsense. You're going to go and create a problem somewhere else. The problem here is you've been messing with the ecosystem too long. And in many ways, with J-35 and J-50, it's a Band-Aid measure in the short term. In the long term here, there needs to be a fundamental shift in how you go approaching Puget Sound. And it needs a government with backbone, and it needs money to be put in. And I'm saddened about America. I'm saddened in America, you know, a country with so much wealth and so much money. I work in Africa, Asia, all these countries that have zero money, and this country can't go doing it. You're rolling back all of your environmental laws. I hope that the government and the rest of yous can step up and sort this out. And there'll be other scientists and learned people who come in and talk about the individual measures. I see I've gone over time, but thanks very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak today. My name's Sherry Tarantino. I'm with Orca Conservancy. Orca Conservancy played a leading role in the effort to rescue A-73, along with a coalition of other groups that created the Orphan Orca Fund in 2002. Although J-50 was obviously ailing for months, we do feel NOAA did not use all the means at its disposal to save her life. That said, we all need to be aware that such intervention is a learning experience, rather than a population recovery step for a food-limited population. Even if J-50 had been returned to the wild, she would have competed with other whales for food. And if we want rescue, if we want rescued southern residents to contribute to population recovery, as A-73 has done for the northern residents, and even the Barnes Lake whales did for the offshores, we need to take significant action to aid southern residents as a whole. Actions that can be taken to increase prey availability include dam removal, culvert replacement, restoration of freshwater spawning habitat, and rearing habitat in both fresh and saltwater, increasing hatchery production where appropriate, and phasing it out as wild runs improve. Removing artificial barriers to migration that make salmon vulnerable to other predators, and improved regulation and compliance with rules for habitat protection. The issues facing this population should dishearten those who argued that we should let nature take its course with J-50. Since the middle of the 19th century, when we started destroying spawning habitat to pan for gold, blocking access to spawning habitat with dams, reducing salmon populations with overfishing, made possible by canning process and degrading the habitat with logging, agriculture, and rural development, development, excuse me, nature has been losing its power to take its course. More of nature's park was taken away, middle of the 20th century, when toxic chemicals like DDT and PCBs were unleashed to impair immune systems and disrupt normal fetal development of this population. The noise added to the sea in the late 20th century and early 21st century has made nature even less relevant. Without action to improve the habitat of the southern residents throughout their entire range, how we respond to individuals in distress will affect individuals with strong will to live, and whose deaths would be mourned by their companions, but it won't help us recover the population. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Manna is Christine Caruso, if you could come up.
Hi, my name is Maria Vermeer. I'm, I'm not part of any organization, I'm just a citizen, and I was born here. We went sailing when I was a child. We looked as hard as we could for orcas on every ferry ride and every sailboat ride with my grandfather. Gosh, we never saw any. Oh, someday. But, you know, I just, this one hit me. My daughter is three and a half years old. She was born probably about two weeks. Apart from J-50, also had just a crazy labor, sounds like J-50 did too. And I just kept reading these news reports, checking your site every day, and I was like, oh my gosh, the words they used to describe this little thing, funky, or spunky, and, and a little fighter, and it's just all the words we used to describe my daughter. So anthropophy, anthropophyze, or whatever the word is, it's, it just hit me for some reason. And, and I just want to say that, you know, from my desktop, I felt like I couldn't do anything. So I really appreciate what you guys have done, and, and I'm such a firm believer in do what you can when you can. And I would really encourage everybody to just turn up the dial a bit. It's clearly a crisis, and, and I'm sitting here from my home. I married someone who has a farm in the Columbia Basin. I also married someone who is a sport fisherman, and who has many friends who are sport fishermen. I can say that, you know, we all have different opinions about things, but the sport fishermen I know sure respect whatever regulations are in place. So if the regulations get a little bit stricter, it seems like the people I know would follow it. I don't, I don't know what the answer is here, but I sure, I sure hope that my kids, and their grandkids, and their kids can look for orcas when they sail, and, and go on ferries, and I really appreciate what you've done. So, thank you.
Following Christine is Jeff Rash, if you would come up to the front.
So it was devastating to watch J-35 carry her dead baby for 17 long days, as the baby slowly deteriorated before our eyes, and more recently, to watch J-50 slowly die as the world watched as well. We cannot sit back and watch our southern residents go extinct. We need to take bold actions, immediate and long-term, to restore ecosystems and salmon habitat in a multitude of ways. Getting rid of net pen-farmed salmon to protect our wild salmon, tear down dams, stop fishing for and eating salmon, voting for like-minded politicians, having no boat zones. NOAA, please, you need to be more transparent. If you have been thinking about capturing J-50 to rehab her, and have been preparing a sea pen in Manchester for months, why was it only public knowledge in the past few days? Please, let us know what you are doing. If the norm is going to be to capture and rehab sick and dying orcas, if they cannot be released, the orcas need to stay in the ocean with absolutely no plans for them to be put in a concrete tank at SeaWorld, Vancouver Aquarium, or anywhere else. If SeaWorld is partnering with you, I would like for SeaWorld to build a permanent sea sanctuary for orcas who cannot be released. And if they are released, and their families don't accept them back for some reason, they can live out their entire lives in the ocean under human care. It would be a win-win for them, as well as the orcas. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Rash is up next, and after that is Sally King, if you would come to the front.
I just have a, excuse me, a couple of questions I'd like to address. I've read some of the necropsy reports on the marine mammals that pass away in Puget Sound. I've looked at the toxin levels that those tissue samples contained. This is not just an orca problem, this is a sailor's sea problem. And we got to start looking at what we're doing with these toxins. I mean, they're in the groundwater, they're in different plants, they're probably in some of the food we eat. So that needs to also kind of be addressed to the public, to let them know how, if any, way that's harming our orcas, and how it's getting to them, and see if this can be solved in some way. I know it may take a while, that's why it's got to be looked at very seriously now. And another question I have is, are there any other orcas out there in three, any three of the pods that are kind of in the same condition that J-50 is? I know there's a lot of people out there looking at them. Do they have an idea now of the health of maybe some of those orcas that don't look great, that things may start being looked at and, and kind of investigated now, instead of waiting until it's too late? And that's where bringing different agencies together, bringing different toxicologists together, histopath, pathologist, to look at the whole environment, and see what is going on in Puget Sound, and how we can help it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally King is up next, and if Karina Mikowski would come to the front.
Hi, my name's Sally King. A lot of you know that I was passing out these bracelets when you came in. They say, "J-35 salmon equals survival." When J-35 was pushing her calf around, I was so heartbroken, I could barely read the reports. But then it dawned on me that she was sending a message. And finally, I thought of something that I could do. So while she was still carrying her calf, I had these bracelets made. So far, I've passed out about 500 of them. My, my reach is very small. I'm trying to get this thing to go viral, to raise awareness that something must be done. Certainly, contaminants and disturbances are important, but if they don't have enough to eat, those other solutions will be pointless. So what I'm trying to do is get, get this out. I think it's a way for the general public to become more aware. And we need to bring pressure on the organizations that can do things immediately to restore salmon habitat. So this is sort of a call to action, and I am looking for anyone who can help me make these more available. I need an e-commerce site to make these available on. I've talked to some journalists who are willing to tweet about it, but people need to have a place to go for, in order to get these. So if, I passed out pieces of paper. I have an email address, projectj35@gmail.com. And I have a Facebook page, Project J-35. So please, get in touch with me if you have any ideas on how I can get this going. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Karina Mikowski, who's next, Michelle McClellan, please come up to the front.
My name is Karina Mikowski. I do a lot of volunteer video work for a lot of cetacean-related events in the area. I just have this to say. This problem with our local whales has to be addressed on a population and an ecosystem level. By the time we're focused on an individual, it's too late. We've got the information, these whales need food. We've had an expert, Ken Balcom, and those at the Center for Whale Research, who've studied these whales for decades, and they've been raising the alarm for years. There are other issues, yes, but food is central. Food, or the lack thereof, leads to failed pregnancies, stored toxins being burned from shrinking blubber reserves, and immunosuppression. Nothing can thrive without food. We must address the expert-identified fastest long-term help available to these whales, breaching the Lower Snake River dams. If we can't all come together and even take one big, bold action, that one, to save this iconic, well-loved, well-studied species, what hope does any endangered animal have anywhere around the world? Thank you.
Michelle McClellan is next. Is this working? Michelle McClellan is next, and Diane Freeman, please come up.
Okay, so I guess I don't need to say my name then. Michelle McClellan. I don't have any new science to share, or any insight that everyone here doesn't already have. I was born in the Seattle area and grew up here. Both my parents graduated from the University of Washington, so Puget Sound was always our backyard. And I live in Portland now, and I drove up this morning to be here. And I want you all to know that I'm representing dozens, if not hundreds, of my friends in Portland who are in anguish over this situation. So Scott, you invited us to talk about how this is affecting us personally. So I'm going to get real personal here, so strap yourselves in. When I first heard about Taliqua, is that how you pronounce it? Taliqua? J-35? I was actually up here visiting my aunt and uncle, and when somebody, Lynn Mapes, has been covering this, someone was quoted as saying that she was not just grieving, but Everything I've read and learned is that these whales are starving to death. So, in my anguish, I'm of sound mind and body, I'm a professional woman, I, you know, I'm a contributing member of my community, I'm not a wacko, but, believe me. But for probably two days, I literally fantasized about parking myself on a public dock in Seattle, or Bellingham, or Port Townsend, or somewhere, and engaging in a hunger strike. For two days, I was plagued with that fantasy. I got so far that I thought, if they drag me off to jail, which they probably will, I'm going to, I'm going to continue to this hunger strike in prison. I am tired of the human race putting ourselves above every other non-human being on this planet, and it's got to stop. So there you go. Tried to stay civil, but I'm a little upset.
Thank you. Yep, Diane Freeman is next, and then Sandy Wright, if you'd please come up.
Guys like my new name, Diane? Okay, no, my wife asked me to speak today. There's, this isn't a simple problem, and there's no simple solution for it. Scott, I got to agree with you, you hit the nail on the head, because my wife and I have been talking about this for quite some time. There is no silver bullet to fix this. You, you have a compound problem with the whales. One, you've got a closed circuit as far as the reproduction, you have a food problem, you have pesticides, and you have noise that all goes into plays into this problem with the whales. How do we fix it? It's going to take all of us. It's not going to take a government agency to run it. If you put that in charge, then you may get what you want, you may not get what you want. It all depends on how much input you have in this program. But the bottom line is, all of us in this room contacting all the people that we deal with in our lives, in our inner circles, so how do we do it? Do we deal with the salmon? Do we deal with the noise? Do we deal with the population? How do you fix this? Is there a solution for the reproduction? Because in this closed-circuit reproduction system that these guys have created for themselves, and now they've even taken it a little bit further, they have a closed segment of what they actually eat, which is the chinook salmon. So do you start artificial insemination on the whales? Do you do something like that? Do you capture a few and try to reintroduce more genetics in this? Because this genetic pool is pretty small at this point on these whales. I don't know. I don't have a simple answer for you. All I can say is that, for me personally, you know, I'll take a step toward eating salmon, I'll take a step toward whale watching, I'll take a step for, you know, soliciting out and helping other people, and doing what I can for public education. I will do what I can to help extend what I know out to other people, so that we can all get on the same page and deal with this problem. Because if we don't, it's what we've all come to the conclusion in this room this day, and as we will see, this pod, or a couple of these pods disappear.
Sandy Wright is next, and Erica Hansen, if you'd come up to the front.
Hi, I just have a few points I wanted to make. First, I'd like to say NOAA has a huge credibility problem when it comes with the southern residents. Like lots of people have said, there's, we've known for over a decade that they don't have enough food, and honestly, we haven't seen anything happen but more whales dying. It has now become apparent that SeaWorld's involved once again with the southern residents. And I just want to say that if NOAA thinks, or SeaWorld thinks, that the people of Washington State have forgotten what they did to this population of whales, they are in for a huge surprise. We will not be silent while SeaWorld tries to repair their ruined reputation by once again using the southern residents for their own selfish greed. SeaWorld was kicked out of Washington State once, and we will do it again if we have to. I am seriously hoping, whatever role SeaWorld is playing, NOAA will strongly reconsider whatever ill-conceived idea came up with to allow them to have any part of this. Thank you.
Erica Hansen is up next, and Jim Wright, would you please come up?
Hello, my name is Erica Hansen. I originally had no intention of speaking. However, after having attended the meeting in Friday Harbor- However, after having attended the meeting in Friday Harbor last evening, I felt compelled to do so. I have no doubt that you love these animals. And while I appreciate that, it became clear to me last night that the bureaucracy of this organization is killing our whales as swiftly as the lack of salmon. You said in the introduction that the recovery of J-50 was done, quote-unquote, "on the fly", and I personally believe that's not true. We've been faced with the decline of these animals for so many years, this is hardly a surprise. The format, this format, doesn't really help. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, however, vague action plans, steadfast refusal to respond to our questions, isn't feeding the whales. Forming committee after committee after committee and talking is not feeding the whales. You keep saying that this issue is complicated, but I honestly believe that you are confusing the word "complicated" with "political." Actions speak louder than words, and right now, we need to be shouting at the top of our lungs. Feed the darn whales! Lastly, in response to the Facebook page having stated that SeaWorld would be represented here, I just have to say to those individuals, if you happen to be here, you have a lot of nerves showing up here. The blood of these animals is very much on your hands, and if you think that you're, these promises that you're making are nothing more than thinly veiled ulterior motives, think again. None of us have forgotten what you did to this population. If I had my way, there would be a hundred-mile restraining order between you and these animals.
After Jim Wright is Anna Gulickson, if you'd come up to the front.
Hi, everybody. I'm gonna build a little bit on what the last two speakers said, and I'll say that I am not, my profession has nothing to do with whales. My passion has everything to do with whales and other animals. And I just have two points to make. The first point is, the science is in as far as what has to happen with these whales. We do not need to do more research. Ken Balcom has been preaching for 20 years now that we need more salmon. I will say too, that the toxins matter too, and that's a great long-term solution, but we also know that if they had enough food, the toxins would not be impacting them right now. We look at the transient killer whales that live here, and they're thriving with the same toxins. Now, point two, gotta talk about SeaWorld. As you probably know, SeaWorld's entire history with orcas has to do with ripping them from their families, or breeding them in captivity, and committing them to a life sentence in captivity. And as they do this, their treatment of the orcas disregards all of the science that out there, out there, which I believe there's a person in the room who's done a large part of this science, that tells us that these animals have emotional capabilities and complexity that's probably tops in the animal kingdom. That includes us. Despite that, we do things that are horrific to them. We rip them apart from their families. It scares me that SeaWorld might be involved with NOAA. It scares me that they're talking about taking J-50. I don't trust entirely what's being said. I believe that there's some plans in place to take these animals from the wild, and it really, really scares me that that might happen. I would strongly encourage everybody out here to take steps that are bigger than our standard steps. If you're like me, you probably do social media posts, you may go to protests. I've been fortunate enough to go to conferences and, and meet some of the wonderful whale researchers that are out there in the world. We need to do more. If they take steps to harass these orcas or remove them from the waters, we need to fight. Thank you.
Anna Gulickson is next, and following her is Greg Dandalis, if you'd come up.
Hello, my name's Anna Gulickson, I'm with Wild Orca. And I'd like to say that the killer whales have been on this planet for roughly 11 million years, and just in the last 48 years, we have seen them go from the captures with SeaWorld to being listed as endangered, and now they are potentially at the brink of their extinction. So from 11 million years in the last 48, we can see that we're probably the issue here, right? So these are the most studied whales in the entire world, the Southern Resident Killer Whales are. And I would just like to ask, what's been done with all this info? Like, we spend all these resources and time and money to study these whales. What's really been done? And I mean on a big basis. There's been the vessel distance that you've done and the critical habitat areas, but what have we really done to try and help this species? Capturing them on a triage basis is not the answer to these whales. What are we going to do tomorrow, next week, next month, next year, to actually save this species? Orcas and seals need salmon to survive. Humans do not need salmon to survive. We actually don't need salmon to be healthy. So why are we not banning fishing and subsidizing the fisheries? Why do we not have sanctuary spaces where whales can forage on their own and not be bothered by vessels and have spaces to be free? Why have you reached out to SeaWorld for support and not local funding and local support? Why have we reached out to SeaWorld for this? And if we can't provide an environment where these whales can live naturally and healthily, then why are we even bothering about this other stuff? If we can't give them the environment to survive in, then why bother? So for once, can we put the whales' best interests before each and every one of our own? Thank you.
Greg Dandalis is next, and would Hannah Gabrielson please come up?
Hi, so I'm Greg Dandalis, and yeah, I'm just gonna echo a lot of what other people have said. Yes, toxins are a problem. Yes, habitat restoration is gonna be a huge, make a huge difference in the long-term solution. But as you mentioned, you do not have regulatory authority over breaching those dams. You do have regulatory authority over fishing, and as a lot of people have mentioned, restricting harvest is something you already do. It's something that's proven effective for fish populations around the world, and none of your literature mentions that. No one here has mentioned that. You have taken measures that I think meet some short-term demands, but don't address the long-term. Increasing hatchery output, sure. Short-term, it looks good, but those fish are competing with wild fish. Now we're at a point where only 4% of catches come from the wild, and those hatchery fish, they don't reach full maturity. We've seen historical weights of Chinook salmon go from 25 pounds down to a current seven pounds. So yeah, sure, we'll, we'll release some more hatchery fish, but that's not in the long-term needs of the Chinook salmon, which is in turn not in the long-term needs of the orcas. So I'd just like to see, at least, it's a complicated issue, but by talking about how complicated it is, that's often, I mean, that's really, I think, an appeal to ignorance, logical fallacy. It's like people talking about solar flares and some global warming. Okay, sure, habitat restoration is good. Sure, toxins are bad, but come on, we've seen restricting harvest work for other fish populations. I don't see why we're not talking about that here. I think it's in the long-term interest of the fishermen. It's definitely in the short-term and long-term interest of the orcas. So I'd like to see more of that conversation happening. Thanks.
Hannah Gabrielson is next, and would Janelle Van Rutten come up?
Hello, I'm Hannah Gabrielson. I'm an underwater photographer and wildlife photographer. And the day before Scarlett went missing, I saw her from the shore, and I got to take a picture of her. I had to look at her and know that I was never going to see her again after that. And five minutes after her and her family left, fishermen came in and dropped their lines to fish right where they were at. And it was not illegal. I went to the grocery store the next day, and I saw Chinook salmon in the market. We know what the problem is. They're starving to death, and you have the capability to help that. Thank you.
Okay, and after Janelle is Marguerite P. Papionen.
Hello, my name is, sorry, I'm very tall. My name is Janelle. I traveled here today, also from Portland, Oregon, because I had to speak up for the Southern Resident Killer Whales, because I'm tired of seeing them be neglected. The Southern Resident Killer Whales have, they had 120 members before SeaWorld's capture era in 1965. In 196, 1976, just 11 years later, the capture era ended, and a mere count of 70 orcas remained. It is now 2018, and 74 orcas remain, 42 years later. The Southern resident population has not been able to come back due to dwindling salmon populations. Out of the 90 orca that were taken from their home and forced into captivity, only one remains, and that's Lolita, who is still at the Miami Sea Aquarium. We have already allowed the captive industry to ruin the Southern Resident Killer Whale population once, and now we are relying on them to rehabilitate our few remaining. SeaWorld has never been able to keep them alive, so what makes you think they will keep them alive now? In 1984, we began taking data on the population of the Chinook salmon. It is clear there's been a steady decline in both the size and number of the salmon returning to both stream and rivers. This has resulted in the endangerment of Chinook salmon species. The orca are starving, and they need a healthy salmon population to survive. This is not an issue that we can solve by capturing the orca. How will that bring the salmon back? The management of fisheries will. It's time to stop putting Band-Aids over the real issues. NOAA, you not, you may not be able to breach the dams, but you do have the position to end fishing of Chinook salmon, and this is our top priority. Thank you.
Marguerite Papionen, are you here? Okay, and after her is Curtis Johnson. And I will say, we do have some additional slots available, so if you would like to speak, you can come up and sign up.
Thank you. My name's Marguerite Papiono. I'm a veterinary epidemiologist who worked with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention for 24 years, primarily in the areas of global health, and currently at the University of Washington as an affiliate professor with the Center for Wind Health Research, looking at the connections between human animals and the environment. I applaud NOAA for all its efforts and including the work being done for individuals on recovery plans. However, it's very clear that the size of this population is now so small, and definitely on the brink of extinction, that a population-based approach has to be taken. It comes to mind with task forces and meetings and hearings and research, and that we are really getting to that phrase, are we rearranging deck chairs on the Titanic? We need action now, and it's very clear that I've learned through work with animal health and human health, that if you don't have nutrition, you don't have anything. And so if they're not eating and getting protein, the contamination, the vessel noise, the, all the other factors that go into this complex picture don't matter. If they're not here, we don't have to worry about all those other factors. They have to be here in order to be able to address some of the other actions, so a sense of priorities can be taken. So action is needed now, and all of us need to participate. We've got the political will at this point behind the bold action that's gonna be needed to get them food, and now. And then we can kick in and start to address all the other factors. And it's not just for the whales themselves. If we haven't caught on that biodiversity and the survival of this whale is connected to our own sustainability as humans, then a big-picture message has been lost. So thank you, and again, really a vote for action now.
Curtis Johnson, and then Ken Workman, please come up.
Hi, my name is Curtis Johnson. I write for truthout.org, so I'm a freelance journalist, I'm also a research scientist. I think the things people have said today are really, really important and powerful. These whales have been on the endangered species list since, I think it's 2005, is that right? 2005. This is a failure, what's happened. It's a failure of the whales, it's a failure of the wild salmon that's been done. I, I believe you probably do care. I believe you care. But business as usual is not gonna get it done. It is not gonna get it done. We need to go out, we, we already know what to do. All the things that people have said today are what we need to do. We need to breach these dams on the Snake River. We need to restore wild salmon habitat. We need to address the other issues. We need to shut down fishing. I'm a fisherman. We need to shut down fishing this year, or for as long as it takes. We have to do these things, or these whales are gonna be gone. We don't have any more time. It's past time for task force, past time for talk, it's action time. You, if you care, you have to stand with us, not with Trump and the rest of them. You have to stand with us, and we need to fight to make this happen. Because, because even Governor Inslee, he probably cares too. But he's going along with business as usual, talking to the other stakeholders, well, it's complicated, what can we really do? We're gonna have to force change if we want change.
Ken Workman is next, and then Olivia Onefeather, please come up.
And this is the native language of the Duamish people that lived here. And I talk like this because we weren't allowed to speak this way for so very long. And what I just said was, my name is Workman, I am of the Duamish tribe, and great-great, great-great-grandson of Chief Seattle. And I'll. That on the wall, on the waltz, this, this thing you call the Salish Sea, Puget Sound, forever lived the blackfish. Today, there's hardly any. And so while the, the blackfish, they can't talk for themselves, I would like to at least give them a mention that we respect this land, we respect these people that are in the water, these people that you call orca. Kalkalhaj is the technical word that we use. Hiba choladu, blackfish. And so I would ask you, and I would ask everyone here, that when you're on this land, you know where you are, that people once lived here, and that when you're out there on the waltz, that there are people in that water, there are salmon people, there are killer whale people, that you know these people are here, and yet you do whatever you can to help them. As Duamish people, we recognize all of this stuff that's happening right now to these blackfish. And so I would, I would implore you not to do the same thing to them that has happened to us. Thank you.
Next is Olivia Onefeather, and after that is Elizabeth Petrus, and I'll make a last call, if anybody would like to sign up, I have a couple of slots.
Hi, I'm Olivia Onefeather of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. And I felt it in my heart and my soul to come here and speak to you and use my voice. Ken Workman is a, I can, how do you follow up after that? That was, he's amazing, and he is, he is the tribe of these lands, and his word should be honored in all ways, always. It's very, very important. J-5, 35, has delivered us a message that couldn't be more clear. These waters must be protected, as if you were a mother protecting your own child. The Lummy Tribe was successful in protecting Cherry Point from the dirty coal industry terminal, which would have been devastating for that population. What, which, which is a great step. We, however, really all must go further and do more. You wanted to do an assessment to know what was going on, and my question to you is, are you willing to challenge the real issues at hand? You said you know you need to do more, and need to be doing more, and the things, the things that are, they're hard. They're hard, and they're, they're big. There are things like volume of the Grand Alliance in the Northwest Seaport that has been bringing in 11% more cargo ships than they were last year. That is having a huge effect on them. These organizations like Amazon, and, you know, Costco and all your great organizations, your corporations, it always comes back to that. The native people of these lands have been telling you to stop with the destructions of these, of our, of our homelands forever, and I wish that you would finally listen. Thank you.
Elizabeth Petrus is next, and after that is Jessie Schwartz, please come up.
Oh, good, I'm not the last speaker. So my name is Elizabeth, I'm a former fisheries manager, and I want to ask a question. Who has ever commented on regulations presented by the Fisheries Management Council? Oh, you have missed a real opportunity, my people. Every February, the council submits a fishery report, basically, what do the Chinook numbers look like, what do the salmon numbers look like? As you know, salmon are managed annually, every year, different numbers come back, and that's identified in a variety of different documents that the Pacific Fisheries Management Council develops. I was part of that process for many years. I've sat on salmon technical teams. There are a lot of really smart scientists that are looking at the data, how many fish are coming back, which ESUs, which DPS is, and setting. are coming back, which ESUs, which DPSs, and setting salmon harvest based on that. You all have an opportunity to participate in that. In April, at the April council meeting, they set quotas. They take public comment. The Pacific Council is based largely on public comment. They ask for public comment, and I have watched public comments sway regulations. The council doesn't write the regulations, but they make the recommendations to nymphs. So if you are not taking that opportunity to get your voice heard on what you think needs to happen with fisheries, you're missing a real opportunity, because the council does want to hear from you. And the council is the body that nymphs rely on to set fishery numbers, especially the salmon fisheries. So everybody in February, go to PFC, Pacific Fisheries Management Council, whatever that acronym would be, dot org, and you will see the first of a series of reports, and then you'll see regulations, you'll see their schedule of when the meetings are happening, and they will listen to you. Thank you.
Our last comment comes from Jessie Schwartz.
How I ended up as the last speaker, I don't know. But I guess I can go over, I don't know, you'll throw something. I'm really proud of everybody's comments today. There were a number of points that came up that were unexpected. You talked, Scott, in your introductory remarks about silver bullets. I think you've been given some. I would encourage everyone to look at the story of the North Atlantic right whales. 2030 was a whale that was killed by the disentangler team a long time ago, and it was supposed to be a waterfall moment, right? We've lost a whale, everybody's gonna rise up and above, but half measures in the boat transport system, half measures on the fisheries, half measures in stopping trawling. Today, there's half as many North Atlantic right whales as they were when 2030 died. When I was looking at that problem 20 odd years ago, there were more right whale biologists than there were northern right whales. And today, there's about twice as many northern right whale biologists as there are northern right whales. And my point there is, it's not metaphor. Without action, we will lose the pot. End of story. Absolutely, hammer that out. But I mean literally without the kind of actions people are talking about. You don't have regulatory authority to breach the dams. You do have regulatory authority to create an emergency moratorium on nontribal fisheries. You do have regulatory authority to petition your federal and state partners to change the boat traffic lanes, to address, you have a lot of regulatory authority and a lot of actions that you can take. So I appreciate everybody's comments there. I wanna speak directly to the SeaWorld issue, and I got 39 seconds to do it. I listened to you speak, Lynn, and this is what you said to me. This is what I heard. It was never our intention to capture that whale, to put it into captivity. You also said you have a pen, and you would really want to avoid ever keeping that whale in captivity. But what you and I know, some of you may not, is that the way this works is this. Once the whale is in captivity, if you develop scientific consensus that it cannot be safely released to the wild, you're able to write an exception to the Marine Protection Act, and that whale can go to SeaWorld or to an aquarium. Those are the facts. That's how the Marine 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 Protection Act works, that's how the statutory authority works, that you can take that whale then and put it in captivity. So my recommendation is, my request would be, my demand for the people to rally around would be, you don't capture a whale until you can guarantee it doesn't go into captivity.
Just to be clear with anybody else, this is the last call, if you wanna come up. Sure, what is your name, and I'll get your name down.
My name is Jessica James.
Jessica James. Okay, go ahead.
It's James, like a girl's name.
J-N-E-S.
Yes.
Very good.
Okay, so I'm sorry that I'm late to sign up to speak. I moved here from Florida across the United States. I grew up as a kid going to SeaWorld. I worked at an aquarium. I've done public education. I've also worked as a vet tech. I'm a marine scientist. I feel that the problem that we have at this time is conservation. We are not protecting the land and the animals that need our protection. They don't have a voice. We are the voice for these animals. If we don't do something to breach these dams, to help these animals, they are gonna die. Period. It is what it is. Just like when you go and you try to cull another species to protect one species, that is not the correct action to take. You're gonna take out something that is vital in an ecosystem, that is needed in that ecosystem. It is a very important part of the ecosystem, and ecosystems collapse when you take these animals out of them. So my opinion, as working at an aquarium, as doing public education, as doing rescue, rehab, and release, I know that a lot of people are against SeaWorld, and they're against aquariums, but the research that is done at them is vital. Whether people agree with them being in captivity or not, if this research was not done, these animals would die. I worked at the Georgia Aquarium in Florida doing conservation, stranding on North Atlantic dolphin species. I used to go out on stranded response when there was a UME, when the animals died. I had to do necropsies on these deceased animals because of the contaminations that are in the water. If we as people do not help our ecosystems, the animals, the people, the environment will die. We are needed to take action for our ecosystem, for our children, for the world. Uh-oh.
Thank you. And we have two more speakers, and I will close it after these two speakers, Shanna Kelly and then Chris Sinjala.
We go from tall to short. So my name is Shanna Kelly, and I was hoping someone from DamSense would be here, but I'm gonna represent as best that I can. So at a meeting the other day, the Orca Summit, we heard some really good data. And on the new information sheet that you guys had submitted on August 31st, on page two, you misrepresented the Chinook, sorry, I'm so nervous, the Chinook data that was six years old and off by 50,000. And so please check out DamSense. It's a wonderful site. We need to get out the real data. We need to share, and we can't have any more misrepresentations anymore. The most effective and efficient way that's been studied for 25 years is to breach the lower four. Economically, it's sound in the whole state. It prospers all of us. And we're ready to do it. We don't need congressional approval. We just need Inslee to do it. And it's already done. They already have the plans to breach. They've been researching this for so long. It's all in line. We just need to go. Thank you.
And Chris Sinjala is our last comment.
Hi, my name is Chris Sorelia. I don't really know much what has been done for organizing people to respond to the needs, but I think it'd be a shame for all of us to leave today without some kind of system in place. And maybe we need to step outside of the building to start collecting email addresses and make some plans. But personally, I feel like I wanna leave with some kind of activity and response, and not just having listened and spoken tonight. So I have a tablet. I don't have a, I'm not a techie, and I don't have expertise in this field, but I'd really like to join some kind of an effort to, you know, change the Chinook consumption, to work on dam removal, and these other topics that have been brought up. Let's leave with something productive today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Scott Rumsey has a few closing remarks.
Well, thank you all. I genuinely and sincerely appreciate all the perspectives that were voiced today. And again, I really appreciate that you all came here to speak your mind, to give us your perspectives, to voice the incredible passion we have in this room and our communities to recover killer whales. You know, I'm very grateful of that. You know, I heard, we all heard a lot of priorities today, and we need to restore the ecosystem, it's about habitat, it's about restoring our salmon prey. You know, I hear the direction that we need to think outside of the box, because the status quo is not working. Heard the message loud and clear about harvest restrictions and sanctuary areas. And I recognize also this frustration with bureaucracy. You know, I hear a lack of trust with NOAA. You know, I definitely, I don't like hearing that. That disappoints me. The only way we can improve that trust is for you folks to engage, and for us to listen, and for us to develop these relationships, so that we can have this exchange. And so I wanna build that trust. I promise to you now that I'm here because I care, and I wanna hear you, and I wanna build that trust. I was touched by Michelle McClellan's talk, that, you know, this is really personal. And it is really personal. I mean, for some of us, it's our jobs. You know, I have a 13-year-old daughter at home. When she was four, we went to the San Juans, went to the Whale Museum, and, you know, she walked out with a couple stuffed animals, and she still has her mommy and baby stuffed animal on her bed that she sleeps with. And while I threw my job and committed to salmon recovery and killer whale recovery, I also have to go to her and answer to her every night. And she is as concerned as all of you about killer whales and that we, you know, break the logjam and make real progress. So I thank you again for coming. Please know that you are heard. Please hear that call to action. You know, individually, we all have a lot we can do, and I hope you feel empowered to engage in the processes, educate those around you and your communities. That's equally as important as a lot of these other solutions that we've talked about. It is gonna take a whole village. So thank you again for coming. I'll hang here for as long as I can to talk with you individually. Thanks.
So thank you all for coming. I just wanna point out, we will be continuing to communicate about what we're doing on behalf of the killer whales. These are the channels by which we share that information, so please follow us and continue the dialogue. Thank you for coming this afternoon.